For Tuesday, February 11th. Ms. Rydel, will you? Thursday, February 13th. Thank you, Commissioner Wiscom. Ms. Rydel, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Chair Wiscom?
Here.
Commissioner Bonderson?
Here.
Commissioner Escobedo?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. And again, just for everyone's note, our new seventh commissioner will be appointed by the City Council on February 25th. Then that new commissioner will be in attendance at the commission's next meeting that gets agendized. So now we go to preliminary matters. Any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items, Mr. Busk?
Madam Chair, there are none.
Okay. Any announcements and appeals?
Yes, I do want to announce that the project at 11 Anacapa, which was approved by the Planning Commission and then appealed to the City Council, the City Council upheld the Planning Commission's decision, that was appealed to the California Coastal Commission, and the appeal was just withdrawn this week. So that project will, can now move forward in the process.
Very good. Thank you. That's good news. Now we're going to turn to review consideration of the Planning Commission minutes for January 16th, 2020. Let's take a look at those. I don't know, did staff receive any corrections or revisions that I may not be aware of? Ms. Rydel or Mr. Busk?
I didn't receive any.
Okay. Are there any, yes, Ms., yes, Commissioner Wiscom, did you have?
Yeah, I've moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other comments from the commission? Otherwise, all in favor of approving the minutes as drafted?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. That passes unanimously. Now, we're going to turn to comments from any members of the public not pertaining to any items on our agenda today. I don't see anyone here coming forward, Mr. Busk, or do we have any speaker slips on that? Okay, very good. So we're going to turn to our one major item today. And before I read the item, I want to just review for everyone as chair this year, I'm going to outline the protocols that I'm going to be using, and this is mostly out of respect to our two new commissioners, Ms. Bonderson and Mr. Escobedo, so they understand the sequence or the flow of how we handle projects with staff, with the public, and among ourselves. So first, we're going to have a presentation from staff, that's Ms. Broadduson today. Then we'll allow the applicant a presentation, and I mentioned to you at the site visit, you have up to 20 minutes if you need it. Then if there are any pressing questions from the commissioners of staff or the applicant, we'll go to those. If not, we invite members of the public who would like to speak on the item. We don't see any here today, so I'm not going to discuss that further. When we get to our next hearing, I'm going to be commenting on minutes per speaker and donation of time, but we don't need to do that today. Then we're going to come back to the commission for commissioner comments. And when we've concluded that, and there is no rush, so please don't feel that you need to hurry through your comments following your questions. We'll, I'll ask for a maker of a motion to approve or deny. I will not be asking for a motion and a second, and this is important, until all commissioners have the opportunity to deliberate. I'm very sensitive to all, all of us, six now, seven eventually, having the respected opportunity to comment before we move into a motion. And then following a motion and a second, I'll ask for any commissioner discussion on an item. And then to, lastly, to ensure there's a clear record of the individual commissioner votes, I've already discussed with Ms. Rydel that she's going to be doing a voice call vote, so that we have a very clear record. Okay, so with that, we're going to go to Roman numeral three, new item, application of Richard Redmond, architect for Taylor Tatman, property owner of 923 Castillo Street. This is the residential multi-unit zone, general plan land use designation, medium high density residential. With that, Ms. Broadduson, will you be making the presentation on behalf of staff?
Yes, thank you Chair Schwartz and commissioners. As you stated, the project I'm presenting today is located at 923 Castillo Street. This is a slide showing an aerial view of the project. It's located mid-block between Correo and Cana Perdido Streets, and it's between the street frontage on Castillo and the 101 northbound off-ramp. And this also shows the concrete-lined creek channel just to the rear boundary of the project site. The project is also located in the west downtown neighborhood as described by the general plan. The existing site, as you can see, is vacant. This is a, it's rather dark, I apologize for that. It's standing at the back of the site, facing towards the street. So you can see it's a vacant lot, and there's a steep slope from the rear of the site leading up to the street frontage. The proposed project that the Planning Commission is looking at today is three new condominium units with seven on-grade covered parking spaces. The project is 14.57 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the RM zone, residential multi-unit zone, and the general plan land use designation of medium to high density. The required approvals that the Planning Commission is looking at today is a tentative subdivision map, along with new condominium development standards. The tentative subdivision map is required to comply with the state's Subdivision Map Act and the city's zoning ordinance and general plan. And the RM zone is intended to provide areas for a variety of multi-unit housing types. And the project is suitable for the proposed site and is described in the staff report will not result in environmental damage, public health issues, or water quality violations. Regarding new condominium development, in addition to the zoning, physical standards are required for all new condos, including parking for each unit, separate utility meters, individual laundry facilities, and private storage space. So during the development review process, the land development team looked at the project's consistency with the general plan policies. And some of those policies include potential for flooding hazards, water quality, biologic resources, and housing. With regard to flooding, which is kind of the most technical portion of this project, and I have a slide that will show you the actual topography in just a moment, but the calculated top of bank for this project is at the 46-foot contour line, which is up by the street, and we saw that at the site visit. Typically, the creeks division would desire and recommend at least a 50-foot, 25 to 50-foot setback from the top of bank. The project has been designed so that habitable spaces are above the designed flood elevation contour of 54.5 feet. So the community development director was able to find the project consistent with the municipal code with regard to flooding. And here's the site plan, and it's a little bit busy, I apologize for that, but there's a lot to see on here. You can see here at the rear of the site is the top of the concrete channel. And then there's a 15-foot proposed easement for access and maintenance, which the applicant is providing. And just to show you some spatial dimensions, this purple is approximately 35 feet from the top of the concrete bank, and the red shows 50 feet. So you can see that the project stays mostly out of the areas near the creek bank. And then the calculated top of bank is the turquoise line, which, as you can see, if we were to ask for a 50-foot setback from that topography line, it would render the site undevelopable. So let's see if I can find my notes. Normally, as I said, no structures are permitted within at least 25 feet of the top of bank. However, the city's code does provide for relief from the development limitations if certain findings are met. And those findings are, will the project significantly reduce existing floodways? Will it realign stream beds or adversely affect other properties? And whether or not the project will be reasonably safe from flow-related erosion, or if it will cause flow-related erosion. For this site, as I said, the calculated top of bank is up by the street frontage, and requiring a 25-foot setback from the calculated top of bank would make the lot undevelopable. So the ordinance allows that the community development director can consider certain factors, as described in detail in the staff report, as mitigating possible hazards which might otherwise result. So as I said, this project is developed so that the finished floor of the habitable portions will be above the designed flood elevation, and therefore, the community development director determined that the allowing the proposed development, including the retention basin and parking, within the creek bank can be found consistent with the purposes in the code, because the development would not significantly reduce floodways, it would not realign stream beds or otherwise adversely affect other properties, and it would not divert the flow. See, additionally, the project would comply with all the recommendations of the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and the Water Conservation District. With regards to biologic resources, the applicant provided a biologic resources report, and that study found that the existing site has little to no biologic, biological value. The creek, as we saw, is encased in concrete, which allows for no vegetation, native or otherwise. However, the project can be count, the project can be found, the proposed project can be found consistent with environmental resources element of the general plan, because it would incorporate a creek restoration plan, providing native vegetation and landscaping. So here's a slide showing the concrete channel. And although it's very hard to see, I just wanted to show you that there is a restoration plan. It's in your packets, which is hopefully better to visualize. So the project includes a creek restoration plan and maintenance measures, and the owner will be required to dedicate an easement adjacent to the creek for access and maintenance of the flood control channel. And Chair Schwartz, you'll recall that we told the applicant that the landscape architect should be here, and we have Amy Blakemore here to speak after the presentation today.
That's excellent.
With regards to water quality, the project will comply with a hydrology report that was provided and recommended incorporating impermeable walkways that will drain to a bio-retention area, and a permeable driveway that slopes to a vegetated swell, routing the stormwater to the bio-retention area, and also permeable parking surfaces to drain away from the building. So therefore, given general plan policies related to both creek protection and provision of additional housing, staff can find that the proposed setback adequately protects the creek while providing new housing opportunities. We also did an environmental review of the project, and we looked at biological resources, flood hazards, air quality near the 101, archaeological resources, and noise. And staff found that there is no project-specific significant impacts that would result from the project. So we found the project could be found exempt using Section 1.15183 of the SEQA analysis. And also, as you know, the project went to ABR two times, and the ABR was able to do the compatibility considerations and found the project complies with the city charter and the municipal code, compatible with architectural character of the city and the surrounding neighborhood. It was appropriate in size, mass, bulk, height, and scale, and it appropriately uses open space and landscaping. And so here's a slide showing the story poles as you're heading west on Castillo Street. This is another slide showing closer to the project site. Here's a slide directly across the street. You can see that the building will appear as a two-story building from the street, because the third story is below grade. And the maximum height allowed in this area of the city is 45 feet. And at the street frontage, it's about 27 feet. And at the back of the property, which is this slide, this shows the story poles from the rear of the property, it's about 37 feet 6 inches, so it complies with the zoning ordinance. Here's another slide showing the story poles. And again, I have the elevations here, just to show you a sample, but the architect will go into more detail with that. And the project will be returning to the ABR subsequent to today's review. So in conclusion, that concludes my presentation, but staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project, making the findings that are listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And again, I'd like to mention that we have the landscape architect here, Amy Blakemore, and we have the architect, Richard Redmond, and the property owner, Taylor Tatman, for their presentation and questions.
Thank you, Ms. Broadduson. Mr. Redmond, are you making the presentation today?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
I'm feeling a little redundant after that. Wonderful presentation by Kelly.
You don't have to use 20 minutes. That's just the allowance.
I'm Richard Redmond from Edwards and Pittman Architects. I moved here in 1976, and I actually moved up on the hill to Santa Barbara Highlands, which was, it was my introduction to the city. And I used to drive down Correo Hill and look out over the city, and it was just beautiful. I mean, I was just blown away by the city at the time. Of course, my rent went from $100 a month to about $300 a month. But over the years, I've lived downtown many different places. I've lived around Burton Circle, around Victoria Street, Valerio, Mitchell Arena. And I used to be able to walk back and forth to work, and oftentimes, I would walk home for lunch, take a little nap, and be back in an hour. So I loved living downtown. It's like a real quality of life, and that's what we want to kind of provide here. So looking at the area, this is across the street, and this is obviously developed as a city project by the Housing Authority. Again, this is directly across the street, the entrance to their parking garage. And this is a two-story Spanish that's down at the end of the block. And so we're kind of taking that as a jumping-off point to actually do a kind of a Spanish design. This is also across the street. Again, my slide's showing US 101 and Correo, and our site is in red. And that blue line is actually that 250-foot limit from 101. So, let's see what we've got next. This kind of gives you an idea of exactly where that 100-year flood line lands, which is way out into Castillo Street, and actually encompasses this entire site. And again, the creek. And I also have story poles.
Commissioner Higgins, do you have your light on for an urgent question now, or would you like to wait until Mr. Redmond completes his presentation? Okay, thank you.
Again, story poles of Castillo.
Mr. Redmond, can you speak into the mic a little bit more?
Yes, sorry.
I know you're soft-spoken, but we want to capture everything you're saying.
Yes. Although my graphics aren't as good as I think Kelly's, what I've shown here is a green line at the top of the bank, and then again, that red line shows the 35-foot setback, and the yellow line is actually the 50-foot setback. The blue line actually shows the 250 feet from 101. Everything to the east of that line has to be, has to be, well, everything to the west of that line basically has got to be sealed because of, I guess, anticipated pollution from, from the US 101. So all windows and everything will be sealed at that point. No fresh air will be brought into the building from that point. Basically, everything on the roof has to be to the east of that line, and that's why we've actually put all of our open personal space on the second floor to the Correo side of this project. Currently, we have a setback of 6 feet for the first two floors and 10 feet for actually anything above the second floor. So we've redesigned it per the new Title 30 zoning code. She mentioned our BFE, and we are actually 1.3 feet above the BFE, and really up 30 inches off of Castillo Street. So we do have some stairs and everything go up to the front of the units. It's a strained site. It's, it's really outside of that 25-foot code setback, but we've really paid attention to the 35-foot and tried to make our building comply with that setback. Now, the 46-foot top of bank is really that green line. Again, Kelly did an excellent job of showing that. So top of bank is the green line. Again, you can see that the only part that we're really over on the ground floor of that 35-foot line is actually that one parking space to the south.
And Mr. Redmond, I think this is an important slide for the Planning Commission to contemplate, because as we have experienced on many developments adjacent to one of our creeks, there's sort of on-paper calculations and what those look like, but going to the site, as we have, there's the reality consideration of what we're looking at in terms of setbacks, development opportunities, and so forth. So I think this is very helpful. Thank you.
And I might mention that while I'm on that slide, we developed this building to be kind of a solid wall along that existing bank, so that any kind of overflow from the creek would be directed against that bank and then to the south. And then everything from that point would be open support, it's actually designed for any kind of water pressure or whatever was directed to the site. This is our first-floor plan, again, showing that 35-foot line and where our relationship to it is. And again, the blue line represents the 250 feet from the freeway. This is actually the second floor, showing the green line is the actual 10-foot setbacks. And this is kind of a generator of, of the plan. The second floor really was the constraints of the site, the setbacks, the 35-foot from one side, the 20 feet on the, on the, on the street side. And the requirement for the open space off of the units is designated in blue. So the, basically, we have one bedroom at either end of this, this long shape, and in between, we have all the support facilities and the circulation that's in yellow. The support includes a couple of bathrooms, one for each bedroom, and then a laundry room. So that kind of generated the, the amount of space that we used down on the first floor for living. This is the roof plan, actually shows where we'd propose putting solar collectors in the future. And then past that blue line is really where all our mechanical would be and any kind of fresh air introduced into the building. The X portions show kind of a breakaway panel that we're anticipating to allow water to filter through the building should it ever become really necessary in a flood situation. Now, these areas, they're basically going to work like a pair of doors to open up and allow the water to go through in the direction of the creek flow. And the reason we did this was to kind of bring the building down per ABR recommendations, bring the building down to the ground, and allow it to tie into the ground instead of having just a very open downstairs area. And again, this is on the south side. Again, it'd be, it's mainly open, but it will allow water to come through those areas by the driveway. It's the west elevation. Now, this is a stormwater plan. They're actually having, they've designed it so that we're using permeable pavers going down the driveway, and then we have a series of check dams underground to actually catch the water and hold it to allow it to drain back into the soil. And then any overflow, actually, downspouts from the building are all directed around to the retention basin. And then the driveway, any overflow on that actually runs across that green area into the retention basin also. So we're really trying to keep most of the water on the site and allow it to drain back into the soil. So at that, I'm going to allow the landscape architect to come up and comment.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll come back to you, Mr. Redmond, with commissioner questions. Thank you on short notice for being here. Would you tell us your name?
Sure, I'm Amy Blakemore, landscape architect. And with regard to the landscape plan, the main design directive is obviously the proximity to the Mission Creek. We've designed, the entire palette is made up of California native plants, plants that are indigenous to actually Santa Barbara County as well. We are required to install some mitigation trees, so there's a number of oak trees and sycamore trees that are proposed to be planted. We place those along the peripheral of the property to allow, to bring the building down to scale for the surrounding properties, and also to create sort of a sense of space within the property as well. There are several California native grasses that have been placed in that corridor that the architect was just describing between, where the permeable pavers are going to be taken to the retention basin in an effort to kind of maybe slow down the water, create sort of a bio-swale situation, junkies and plants that are able to tolerate standing and being in standing water. At the front of the property, there's some more structural planters. We have those planted also with natives, but ones that are a little bit more presentable for year-round. Everything will also benefit from a little supplemental irrigation, but we've got some hespero aloes and some lacinja, which will kind of cascade over and soften up some of the garden walls that are in the front. There are the significant eucalyptus and yucca and pittusporum that are all to be removed, so those will all be taken out, and the restoration process will begin after that. And we've also proposed a prunus hedge along that north section of the property line where we would have the most impact with the adjacent building. So the prunus will get 10 to 12 feet tall and hopefully give everybody some screening along that line. I think that's about it. There's any questions?
Is that it? Okay, very good. Do you have a little bit of time to stay with us for questions?
Sure.
Excellent. Let's go back to, if we could now, we don't have any public comment, so questions from the commission to staff and/or the applicant. I think, Mr. Higgins, you were up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I made for staff or the architect or applicant, just walk me back through the top of bank discussion. You have what is visually, you know, top of bank because of a creek channel, but that's not really the top of bank because, and it's neither the flood elevation. So you cite code section as to how that was calculated, but how was it calculated? The building official does what? Is there just a different exercise in, in the change in topography like we see sometimes on these coastal projects where there's a discussion about where the edge of bluff is? Who wants to take that?
I will start.
Okay.
And then I'll let Mr. Redmond finish. Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Higgins, the topography, the calculated top of bank, so you see that on the site, the creek, the con- so you see that on the site, the creek, the concrete area, and then if you look at the topography of the opposite side of the concrete bank, it's higher on the opposite side than on the project side. So if for some reason the creek, the concrete channel would overflow in the event of a 100-year flood, the water would flow onto the project site. So I think that's how the building official calculated the concrete, I mean, sorry, the calculated top-of-bank to be where you, not necessarily where you would think it would be, but where the water would flow come 100-year flood situation. And I'll let Richard Redman as the architect try to explain that also.
I don't know if I can. It was established by the building department, so we're just going by what they decided. And the reasoning behind it, I really don't know.
When, out of curiosity, was it, is it an analysis that takes place on a project-by-project basis or was this channel already calculated? Did you know that going into the project that that was the line?
When we first looked at this project, we assumed the top-of-bank was actually the top of the concrete bank. And I think that the research that was done prior to that actually used that as top-of-bank. And it wasn't until we actually submitted this to the city that they decided that the top-of-bank was much higher, so.
Okay, well, while you're up there, help me understand the breakaway panels. When I look at the elevations, it looks like the garage doors are, there's no garage doors, correct?
No.
Are those all open?
No.
But two, on two sides, there are panels.
Yes.
Is that, what's that, what's the purpose of that? Or do you have an example of what that actually looks like? It's a sealed part of the structure, but it does fall away in a flood?
My thought, this would be a, almost like a pair of hinged doors that would open in the direction of flood. And really, the only place we're doing it is really on this wall to the north of these stairs. And then basically on this wall to the south, near the driveway. In relation to that, all the rest, in fact, I would really like this wall to be pretty much solid, but it's really going in the direction of the flow. So any place where I really have some place where water could back up and cause a problem with the structure, I'd like to somehow have a breakaway. And my thought, it would be like a pair of doors. And this would be actually painted certainly the same color as the walls up above and certainly give you the impression of the structure tying itself down.
So that was a design choice. You could have kept those parts of the building open and not had a breakaway.
Right. But I think the building department, well, I take that back. It's the ABR that has a real concern about actually tying the building to the ground.
Understood.
Yeah.
Another question for you. Did you look at apartments or what the density would look like under AUD?
We actually did, and it's pretty constrained the size. It's only 9,000 square feet. And we actually had looked at, divided into four. But with the amount of parking that, well, we didn't look at it in an AUD parking sense. So when we looked at this, and this was a few years ago, we looked at it as a major circulation item in the middle, or access in the middle of the building. And then there was a problem with actually having four basic apartments and actually getting some kind of realistic amount of bedrooms and living space and still being, we'll have windows, you know, to the exterior with that kind of layout.
So if you were to put in circulation for access into the units down the middle, you would lose a bunch of space, is that?
Yeah, right, correct. And basically, you'd have to provide some sort of area way, you know, just to get light into that center section so you could actually make use of it in bedrooms and such.
Okay. Last question, maybe for this, is your civil engineer here?
No.
No. Okay. Or for landscape architect, is the basin planted with anything or is it just turf or what?
It is planted.
Ms. Blakemore, could you come back up, please? Thank you.
The retention basin is not planted. We have plants planting surrounding it, but it's not planted out. There was a, I think it's just stone-lined at this point, was my understanding, and so there wasn't any allowable space for actually getting soil medium in there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, I just have some quick questions. I did have a question on the retention basin too. So I've seen retention basins constructed with the rock below and then a minimal amount of soil on top and with planting. So is there a possibility to do this? And that's question number one. And question number two, I don't think it's detailed in the plans here. I didn't, I didn't see it. It's not, Commissioner Higgins is saying it's not there. So is it something that's written in stone or is this something that you could look into?
I'm a little out of my element that.
Yeah, I understand that.
But it was my understanding that it is just a rock basin. Typically, when they have a soil infrastructure there or some sort of substrate that you could plant in, it's referred to as a rain garden. And that is not the condition that we have at this point.
Okay.
We can certainly talk to the civil and see if the requirements would change, you know, if it would alter our scope a bit.
Yeah, I don't know. My particular personal property has that kind of basin on it, and it is planted on top. And it's about a 10-year-old project that was approved by the city. So, yeah, so I just think, I think that's worth looking into to see that would certainly be, I think, more appealing. So, and let me just see if I have any other, yeah, and I have one other question for you while you're up there. Thank you.
Sure.
The, your street tree that you're adding is a jacaranda mimosafolia, and is that the street tree for that block?
That is what's designated, yes.
Okay, so you've been approved for that and the location's been approved, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Okay, that's all the questions I have for you. Thank you. And I think the rest of my questions are for Ms. Broaderson. Yeah, one is, I'm just going to, Exhibit A, and this is, do you have numbered pages, 25 of 66, or you probably don't, but Exhibit A, the draft C of A. There's just one small correction on the first page of that, and that would be if we do approve this development, you need to change the date from the 21st of November. That was just something, I'm sorry, I didn't email you about that. It's really not something. And then I'm going to page nine of 12, which is page 33 of 66 in our packet. Condition P, construction worker trips should be minimized by requiring carpooling and by providing lunch on-site. Is that a typical requirement?
Chair Wiskom, I'm sorry, Chair Schwartz. I think that can be stricken because it looks like template language and it's probably for a much larger project.
That's what I would have figured. Okay, yeah. I mean, I don't mind the carpooling. I think that's always a good thing to have, but the lunch on-site is a little over the top. Okay, and that was on the retention basin. Let me just see a little more. Oh, okay, and I'm on page, Commissioner Lodge would probably ask this question too, but I'm on page 64 of 66, the last page of the C of A, draft C of A. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is the ABR meeting minutes from April 8th. Sorry. And that's 64 of 66 in our packet. And does the elevator require a transformer?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Wiskom, I will have to ask the architect, and I don't know if that's been studied yet.
No, it does not. It can work off of 120.
Okay, because I think we had this discussion on another project just a few months back, and I thought it was required, but, okay, okay.
And we're talking about small elevators and they could even be pneumatic, so.
Yeah, okay. So when ABR has asked you to study whether the elevator will require a transformer, you have studied it and the answer is no?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Madam Chair, I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, please.
Sorry, before you move on with conditions, I just want to private, provide a little bit more explanation on the calculated top-of-bank so that that's clear to commissioners how that's calculated. To simplify what's written in the code, for Mission Creek, there is a required top-of-bank determination. And if the existing creek bank is steep, steeper than 1.5 to 1, as is the case right here, you essentially take the toe of the bank and go back at an angle of repose of 1.5 to 1. So using that angle, that's what takes you out to almost the front of the property. So that's what we mean when we say a calculated top-of-bank. Mission Creek is the only creek in the city that has that calculated top-of-bank requirement in our ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Busk. I think we're ready to move to questions from Commissioner Bonderson. Are you next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. My question is going to be for Mr. Redman. And it is with regard to the windows on the east side of the structure that's facing Highway 101. I don't know if you'd like to pull up that slide, but I heard you saying that the windows are sealed when you were speaking, but reading the plans, the elevations, and also the floor plans, the windows all seem to read the same on all sides of the building. Are there different forms of windows that work differently on different sides of the building in the sense that it looks like some are French doors, but they're on the side that you say are sealed? Are they just aesthetic? And how do we know what is happening throughout the four sides?
Well, I apologize for, I probably did show them on my plan as being operable, but they are not going to be operable and they'll be fixed. And the whole idea is to air-condition and heat the building and keep all the operable windows away from 101. So again, I'm sure that I didn't show that on my plan, but that's the intent.
I am not reprimanding you. I was just curious to hear more about your vision. Will the windows that are behind the Highway 101 setback operate differently? Do you plan to have opening windows towards the front of the building on the sides?
Yes.
Can you speak more about that and how they may differ?
These windows, let me go back one. These windows, for instance, in this area, would be casement windows. So they happen to be off the kitchen area and they're operable, and I believe these are operable also. So until you get back, I think the line is somewhere in here, then we get past that point to fixed windows.
I'd like to suggest possibly for your next plan set to show the 101 setback also in the elevations and maybe just point out that the windows towards the front of the building would be operable and the ones in the back are the sealed fixed ones. I think that would be really important for us to know.
Okay.
Simply because we're making, you know, there's findings here. We have to approve conditions of that exact discussion having to do with the ER-7 policy. So thank you for giving us more information on that. I'm also curious about the wall on the ground floor that separates your outdoor parking space with the indoor entry points. You might be able to find that on a site plan or? Since we've been talking a lot about flooding and being close to the creek and there's creek conditions on here, I'm assuming that you have thought out special engineering or conditions for that particular wall if it takes pressure of a flooding impact. Do you have any design thoughts on what you're, might be visioning here?
These are going to be concrete block walls certainly and tied down to the foundation. And certainly, we would allow, or we would install those flood vents in them to allow water if it were to actually get out. So currently, we still have to go into structural design and actually design all the supports and everything to meet those kind of requirements. Now, my thought is that since this is tucked pretty much into the hillside, the water coming down is going to be mainly hitting it from probably the west side. And this would push it more into the hill where it would be braced. So I don't think it would cause any kind of a lateral load on these walls. And I think as long as they're waterproof, and I think concrete blocks certainly would be that way, they should be adequate to protect, well, they should be adequate to stand up to the flooding. They probably won't protect what's stored behind them, but at least, you know, our determination is to make sure everything down there is flood-resistant, including the doors and everything else, certainly per FEMA requirements.
Yeah, of course. And I think that a lot of those will come to your attention as you go through the structural drawings and working on the details for building and safety. I just was curious to know what your thoughts were when you were designing this, especially because the elevator does go to the ground floor. And based on our site visit, there was talk about potentially having it resting at the first floor and that will, I'm guessing will come into detail at a later time.
I think we can actually make the elevator stay at the first floor and just call it down, and then it would naturally go back up again after its use.
Okay, and that will obviously be detailed at a time when that's being designed. I'm actually very pleased with the design solutions that have been made by the architect, engineer to manage the flood and the creek requirements, especially to support the best solutions for the constrained site as this one is. And for now, that seems to wrap up my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions to staff, Commissioner Bonderson or?
Not at this time. I have comments, but I can hold on to those. Thank you so much.
We'll do those. Very good. Commissioner Escobedo, did you have any questions at this time?
A few of my questions were already asked, but the one question I do have is, will this building have all-electric appliances or was there an intention to have gas appliances?
I think it's going to have both. I mean, it's certainly going to have gas supply. Now, everything that we have do actually has to be above that flood elevation. So all plumbing lines, all gas lines, all electrical lines, all electrical panels, everything else has to be actually above that flood elevation. So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to actually get that and the structure all in that basic 1 foot 4, I think it is.
Yeah.
Space that we have, but I think we can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Bonderson, your light is still on. Would you like to ask some additional questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So especially for the landscape architect, Ms. Blakemore, any questions, further questions for her? We can release her. I know that we asked you to come sort of on short notice. So thank you, thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions myself. Ms. Lodge, I didn't know if you had any lingering questions. Okay. Mr. Redman, you mentioned something about solar, quote, "in the future." Can you tell me what you're providing on the development in terms of solar-ready?
I took a look at what was available on the roof, and we certainly have adequate space to provide enough solar panels so that it would be solar-ready. Now, whether the, whether the owner's going to install this or not, I don't know, but certainly we're going to make it solar-ready.
Did you say we can or we are? I want to be very clear about your answer there.
We are going to make it solar-ready.
Okay. Okay, very good. Let's see, I think that, those are my questions for you. I just have a couple of questions to staff. I was curious, Ms. Broaderson, on page eight of our staff report, under the land use element, there's a reference to some of the local development, especially these two housing authority developments, Casa de las Fuentes, El Correo, and then there's generic reference to some others. You mentioned. El Correo, and then there's generic reference to some others. You mentioned them as high-profile, and that phrase just sort of jumped out at me. Why are you referring to these in the neighborhood as high-profile?
Chair Schwartz, thank you. It was taken out of the general plans language, so I took it directly out of the general plans language when discussing the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. I didn't know if you were using this to characterize it with some other meaning, but thank you. Thank you for that. And then on the very next page of the staff report, page nine, under housing element, in the first sentence that talks about the fact that there are very little vacant available land, new residential development, city housing policy support build out of infill, goes on from there, areas where individual projects are deemed appropriate and compatible, but aren't we really talking about where zoning allows for the development? That's sort of the first bar. When an applicant comes in, if the zoning allows for certain development, they continue to move through the process. If the zoning doesn't even allow for the development, this notion of deemed appropriate or compatible, that's farther into a process. Is that right? So to me, this seemed not quite clear enough, but I just wanted to leave you with that. I didn't know if you, you know, extracted that from somewhere else, or you wanted to comment on that for me. And if not, that's fine. I just, I think it's important that our commission understand, and the community, and applicants understand. The first bar is whether or not the applications, we've discussed this many times with staff, both in public and private, if the application doesn't even meet the allowed use or uses in the zoning, it stops there and then other conversations are required. So further into it, it's these more, if it's not a ministerial approved project or to be approved, and it's discretionary, then you get into some of these other more qualitative or subjective considerations. Would you agree? Okay, very good. You're nodding yes. I'll just state that for the record. Okay, very good. I wanted to take a moment and ask the commission, other than a few things I've heard of requested or suggested changes to the draft conditions of approval, they do start on page 25 of our packet, this is Exhibit A, I wanted to give us a chance to go through that before we make general overall comments. Yes, please. I think Commissioner Higgins, you may have had your light on there, and then Commissioner Wiscombe.
Just an additional question.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you.
Just, can you describe for us what it means to be solar-ready?
I think that the building is set up to have solar actually plugged into the existing system. So somehow, we've got to have some sort of a connection to allow that DC to be converted into AC and connecting into the existing system. So it leaves, it says that the equipment wouldn't have to be there, but definitely the connection and the ability to make the connections would actually be there.
So some kind of inverter?
Yes.
Okay. It's not pre-engineered for roof penetrations or to that level?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'd like us to comment on the conditions of approval?
Yes, I think now would be an appropriate time. I want to make sure we get all of the commissioners, if there are any new questions or requested or suggested changes to the conditions of approval.
Okay. I can do that. May I make my comments at the same time?
Please. Sure. I think we're ready for that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Don't see any other lights.
I think the project is very thoughtful. It's well thought out. I think the landscape plan is a great benefit, not only to the property, but to the community and the creek. I would like to see the landscape architect work with the civil engineer to see if there's a possibility of maybe some shallow-rooted plants on top of the retention basin. We weren't, we didn't get that report, so, and I think actually there was a detail for that basin in the report, and several of us commented on that basin. So that's some of what I would like to see. I'm certainly in acceptance of the findings. And in the conditions of approval, there was the date change on page one of the conditions to today's date from November, which is when the project was continued. One thing I didn't mention before, if you go to page eight of 12 of the C of A, it's page 32 of our packet, I would like to see a condition that no on-street parking is permitted. So that would mean off-site parking. I just think that area is pretty congested, and we've seen construction projects that, you know, all the spaces are taken up, and it frustrates the neighborhood. So if that's possible, and if my fellow commissioners agree with that...
And this would be number four, Commissioner?
This would be, sorry, yes, construction parking on number four, where it does say free parking spaces for construction workers shall be provided onsite or offsite. I know it's very difficult for you to provide them onsite and do your work, but perhaps an offsite location would be acceptable and encourage the carpooling, too. And then on page nine of the conditions of approval, under P, I'd like to see stricken the lunch onsite, but leave the construction work trip should be minimized by, I don't like the word requiring carpooling, but encouraging carpooling, I think, is probably a better choice of words. It's not, it's not always possible in projects like this, because people are in different trades or doing different things, and it'd be difficult. Let me see if I have anything else here. No, I think, I think that's it. So with those changes, if they're accepted by my fellow commissioners, I'm happy to make a motion at the appropriate time on approving, making the findings and approving the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe. Commissioner Bonderson, would you like to comment now?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So as I mentioned before, I am also pleased, as Commissioner Wiscombe is, to really see good solutions that were made for this site, especially considering how highly restrictive the site is. For me, I'm also in acceptance of the findings, but I would like to have the plan set match up more so that the findings and the conditions can actually be read visually as well. So I'd like to draw your attention to the landscape plan, that would be L1, and just want to mention that the, if you want to grab it, I'll wait for you, L1. So please just update the second floor on L1 to match the second floor that shows on A 1.1. It's just drawn a little bit incorrectly and differently, and the structural column has to be shifted. Just a courtesy. Also, I'd recommend some form of hatching or gray fill for the driveway parking and hardscape area, found on the topo map on A 1.1, and potentially also on L1, just to help us read that site plan easier. I took quite a bit of time to really try to find the ground floor, since we speak about it so much in our conditions, and so many of the flooding and creek requirements and the setback conditions are actually dependent on this plant, on this site plan. So reading this page more easily and clearly, especially because it's designed to accommodate all of these conditions, it's done so well, it would just help us to read it and see it more quickly.
Commissioner Bonderson, I appreciate your thoroughness, and I just want to separate out for us and the applicant and staff, any recommended changes you have on the conditions of approval versus recommendations back to the applicant as they continue on working with ABR.
Are they separate? Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to, you know, tracking, and Ms. Rydel is tracking this, too.
Of course.
So for example, let's go back to the landscape architecture plan.
Yes.
No, excuse me. The L1 sheet updating of the second floor to match A1. This is really directional, right back to applicant, and now you're going to A 1.01 on another matter. Okay. So we're not yet at conditions of approval, if you have anything there?
I have a feeling that my last comment will match the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Because it's...
Let's just be very clear for staff so that there's not a lot of back and forth between Ms. Brodesson and Ms. Rydel.
Of course. Thank you. And excuse me if I'm a little off track.
No, no, no. This is very helpful. We can take our time. There's no rush in getting through everything correctly.
The only, the last comment, the only other one that I have left, was about the condition sheet having to do with the Highway 101, the air quality.
Yeah, if you could tell us which page or which...
Page 29 of 66.
Okay, great.
Now, it's not a verbal change, it's just the idea that the plans should match by showing the line setbacks that, on every plan sheet, elevation sheet, the roof as well, to really define where that Highway 101 setback is and the solutions that are being made to fit the conditions.
It's directional to staff and the applicant, as opposed to a change in the conditions of approval.
But it will help with that. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's it. Great. Let's see. So then we have Commissioner Higgins, I think you were next. Some comments, the conditions of approval versus other.
Sure. Certainly support the project, appreciate the architecture. Thank you for your patience through the process, first with the falsetto elevation and the NZO and all the other hoops you had to jump through. So I think it's going to be a great project, and look forward to getting it built as soon as possible. I don't know for sure, I'm a little uncomfortable with the changing of conditions, particularly on the basin possibly requiring plantings.
That wasn't a change. That was just a suggestion, again, back to the landscape architect.
Okay. Well, with that, I think I can, I can, I think I can agree with what's been said already about changing conditions, but I'm not quite sure where Commissioner Bonderson was going about changes to the plans. We could add a condition that says on construction documents, the applicant needs to show that 250-foot line on the plans. That's a, that's a condition of approval, but...
Chair Schwartz?
I thought that Commissioner Higgins, what I was hearing, so this is why I like to get the record straight, and I asked Commissioner Bonderson to separate out specific recommended revisions or changes to the conditions of approval versus just directional recommendations back to the applicant as they return to ABR. And so if, let's just clarify, those were really directional recommendations back to the applicant to ABR, right?
Yes. They were, they were almost all design recommendations. The only one I would say that has to do with the conditions directly was the final comment that I made, so that the conditions that we are reading, that we're approving today, are actually visually matching by having that highway reflected in the plan. So there's a visual reading with the verbiage that we're seeing.
Okay. Well, just, yeah, so Ms. Brodesson is nodding along with Mr. Busk.
Very good.
Were you going to comment, Mr. Busk?
Commissioner Schwartz, I would just mention that if you wanted to add that condition in appropriate place, would be in the design review condition.
Okay. So let's look at that. So that's on page, yeah, right, that's page 29 of our packet of 66, but for those just looking at the C of A, it's page five, letter D, design review. Did you, anywhere, would you like to comment? Yeah, let's, so let's, I'd like to hear from Mr. Busk if you, if staff would prefer or recommend.
I would, yes, recommend either probably prior to item number four, because it's also related to the Highway 101, 250-foot setback.
Okay. And we'll just make sure that Ms. Rydel is clear about that before we conclude today. I don't want there to be any confusion. Back to you, Commissioner Higgins, would you like to continue on with some comments?
Yeah, just some clarification from the commission on construction parking. So there's a condition three.
And we're back to page eight of 12, conditions of approval.
So there's construction, storage, and staging, and construction parking. Construction parking, condition four, during construction, free parking spaces for construction workers should provided, be provided onsite or offsite in a location subject to the approval of the Public Works Director. Were you seeking to modify that?
I was really, I'm happy to change the wording, but I was seeking to, to not allow on-street parking of construction vehicles. That has caused a lot of problems in a lot of neighborhoods where you get multiple trades coming in and parking their vehicles. In this case, it would be on Castillo Street, and it's, it's just caused real difficulty with other sites where we've had conditions of approval. So I think one of the last projects we reviewed, we required parking to be onsite. And here, there's some flexibility, but I'm just trying to eliminate the on-street parking.
Yeah, I guess I feel like that's, that's a pretty hefty burden down there during a construction project where you just don't have any other place to park. I don't know where you're...
Ms. Ostringer, would you like to come on in with us on this discussion?
Chair Schwartz, commissioners, if you look at item three above, there's a, the language says that no parking or storage shall be permitted within the public right-of-way unless specifically permitted by the Public Works Director with a Public Works permit. We can leave that in. If we, if the commission desires to not have on-street parking in any way, then I would just suggest that you strike out the unless specifically permitted by the Public Works Director.
I'm perfectly happy. I didn't, I didn't read the second sentence clearly enough in number three above, but I think that that actually gives the flexibility with that. So I would strike my comment before. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I love this teamwork, starting off the new year. Okay, to Commissioner Escobedo, you have some comments for us, either conditions of approval and/or just in general?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regards to the conditions of approval, I can, I'll support the changes that have been made. In regards to the project, this is a great project. I thought, as well, it was very thoughtful. I did go back and watch the ABR meetings, and they were very supportive, and that says a lot as well. The restoration plan, I was very happy to see that. I enjoyed the planting plan in, as well. One of the things that I would encourage you to do is to look into an all-electric appliances, especially on this project site where there is air quality concerns because of its proximity to the highway. And you've done a good job of mitigating the air quality indoors with the central air system and having the, the windows that don't open that are within that 250-foot setback. But with gas appliances, there's also emissions from those that contribute to concerns about indoor air quality. And so on a site where there's already concerns about outdoor air quality, I would encourage you to look at all-electric appliances for that reason. And then, in addition, it also contributes to our general plan goals of trying to reduce our greenhouse gases, and that's one way to do it. In addition to, we have solar-ready on the roof, but perhaps even going a step further and adding the solar. So not directions, but encouraging strongly. But again, this is a great project, and I'll support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lodge, comments?
Well, thank you. Commissioner Escobedo took all my words out of my mouth.
Making it so easy for us at the beginning of the year.
But I, a little further on all-electric appliances, the city sustainability committee of the council met on Tuesday, and they're beginning an update on the climate action plan. And one of the things is, is to use as much as possible clean energy, which we have the possibility of getting to with electricity. And so I would also like to encourage looking at going all-electric. That eliminates the problem of dealing with gas lines for you. So it might be, it might be easier. So it might be, it might be easier in some ways, but it also is environmentally in terms of ultimately using less, emitting less greenhouse gases, it's even better. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Escobedo, you have your light on still. Would you like to come back and make some additional comments for us?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So my comments are as follows. I am going to be supporting the project and making all the findings in the staff report. I have some specific comments first before I ask my colleagues for a motion. And I'd like to start with, kind of going right through the staff report and some themes that we have, which I think warrant highlighting on this very important project, and I think very worthy project. We have a degraded site, and there's, there are a number of references to the degraded quality, environmental quality of the site, proximity to a concrete channelized creek, which, you know, pains us all that many decades ago, this is, this is how our waterways were treated, but we're now more enlightened, and we, we know that's not the way to handle our natural resources. So I think the cleanup and improvement with monitored plans are going to be very important, and I go right through our staff report from page five, and then I jump to page 10, for example, and the creek restoration plan is very admirable, and I'm looking forward to following that and learning more about that. Rainwater capture and improved handling of that. You know, three-unit condominium development, and you might have heard a question from one of the commissioners, I would like to see more residential units, you know, for-sale, for rental. But one of the things that struck me in really trying to absorb the totality of this project for only three units, three residential units, and all that's going to be required of the property owner, both implementation and then ongoing maintenance and management, is that this is a high-cost project. This just feels like a high-cost project, and you've heard us before, if you've watched the planning commission's hearings, you know that we're sensitive to, and we follow and look to influence cost of housing project approvals and housing development because it all gets passed on in one way or the other, whether it's a for-sale or it's rental. So, not that I would by any means recommend shortcutting any, of course, of any of the environmental improvements, they are critical and much respected. I'm just saying, this all goes into the pot that, of the cost of housing development. So, just, just eyes wide open for all of us. Also, I would say then, sort of in closing, that if there's an opportunity, once you move through this project, to be involved with other for-sale, I know there's a great demand for smaller, more for-sale units downtown, certainly in balance with rentals, I hope that you and some of your property owner, investor colleagues will get involved with that. I hear a lot from members of the public who are looking to downsize from larger properties in other areas of our community, and we just don't have more moderately priced, reasonably priced, smaller condos downtown. So looking forward to you perhaps fostering more of that. I think that's it for today from me, and so now, look for a motion. Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will make the motion that the planning commissioner is fine with the findings. That's section 12 on page 13 of the staff report, and we approve the conditions of approval with the date change, the elimination of the lunch, onsite lunch. And I think the other one was Commissioner Bonderson's request that we put in the, the condition in the design review, as Mr. Busk had suggested, about the highway 101 delineation, so the 250, the setback. I think that was it. Is that correct? The rest of what we said were really encouraging, encouraging statements to, to the design team and to the owner, so.
And Commissioner Wiskom, just to confirm, because I think you had a good revision, back to item P on page nine, and this is, we are going to strike, and by providing for lunch onsite, but we were also going to change, as you had suggested, the word requiring to encouraging carpool.
Yes, yes.
And I thought that was, if the commissioners are supportive, I thought that was a good change as well.
Thank you for catching that, okay.
Second?
Yeah, good.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much to the applicant and to Ms. Bond, to Ms. Brodesson. Going to have to separate out Brodesson from Bonderson when you're both here today, both here. And then we have a 10-day appeal period, which needs to be announced, but we will look forward to this project continuing back to ABR. Thank you very much for being here, and also asking the landscape architect, Ms. Blakemore, to come on short notice. That was very much appreciated. With that, we're going to move to another section of our agenda. Before, before we get to committee and liaison reports, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that Ms. Rydel is one of two employees this quarter who's been recognized. When I was at 630 Garden Street on the second floor on Monday, I saw the plaque outside the reception desk, and Ms. Rydel is one of two employees, so very deserved, from my, my perspective. So I think, I think we need to recognize and, and reward great service, and you certainly provide that to us, Ms. Rydel. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could she stand up and take a bow, please?
Madam Chair, could she make a speech as well, too?
What did I unleash? Okay. I didn't know that we went to quarterly acknowledgements. There was monthly and then, anyway, but-
I was so good, they had to.
There you go. Absolutely. Okay, so now we're going to turn to staff hearing officer liaison report. Does anybody have one for us today? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned in my comments on the project we just approved, the Sustainability Committee of the City Council, which consists of council members, Sneddon, Harmon, and Mayor Maria, met on Tuesday, and what they were to do is decide how to go forward with beginning the process. And staff presented two alternatives. There was much discussion of which, which way to go, whether to make, to set the goals to start with, and there were all much agreement on setting them very high and continuing to show, be a leader in environmental issues of the city of Santa Barbara. And the alternatives were to go to the public first to see what their thoughts are on the issue, or to set the goals and then go to the public to see how the public could help the city meet them. So they went with the second alternative and starting, starting work on that.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Commissioner Wiskom, updates for us? Other committee and liaison reports?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, just two, two things to report on. January 21st, we had the De La Guerra Plaza Subcommittee Meeting Number Two. And I just wanted to mention to the commission that the, one of the purposes of the committee is to update respective boards and commissions on development discussions about De La Guerra Plaza. Commissioner Higgins and I attended meeting number two. He's, this was his first meeting, this was my second meeting. At this meeting, committee gave staff guidance on parking at the plaza with aim to balance the community's needs and achieve consensus. So we, at this meeting, reviewed several options for parking, and we miraculously did achieve consensus by unanimously agreeing to remove the parking around the plaza, that's the horseshoe part of the plaza. And what the discussion, some of the highlights of the discussion were that this will eliminate conflicts between vehicles and the plaza activities. It will provide more space for a variety of desired activities that the public would like to see, and it would provide better connectivity with historic structures and the historical environment of the plaza itself. So there are currently 60 spaces at the plaza, and that includes the spaces on De La Guerra Street, and that includes 10 loading spaces. So there's 50 regular and 10 loading spaces. So with elimination of the parking around the plaza at the horseshoe, parking will be reduced to 25 spaces on De La Guerra Street. And De La Guerra Street parking itself, I think, is going to be part of a future discussion because there's lots of options on, on how we do that, and there is some discussion about what should happen with De La Guerra Street. Just that, that block, that one block by the, by the plaza. So in summary, the committee felt that the elimination of parking in the horseshoe provides the greatest design flexibility for the plaza, and it really does give the designers an open, kind of an open canvas with, with, out that restriction. The next meeting, it's been kind of a moving target, but the next meeting, which would be meeting number three, is tentatively scheduled for Friday, April 10th, and I just want to remind everyone that the meetings are open to the public. Okay. And then on January 27th, Chair Schwartz and I attended the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan Subcommittee Meeting. And at that meeting, we reviewed the draft executive summary of the plan and provided comments. And then we also reviewed the upcoming schedule for release of the plan, and I wanted to talk about that a little bit. Council is going to review the adaptation plan, draft adaptation plan at their regular March 3 meeting. And then the plan will be available online from March 4, and there'll be an eight-week public comment period, and that will be March 4 to April 29. And during that time, staff will be bringing the draft adaptation plan to the respective boards and commissions. And that includes our seeing the, seeing the draft plan and having a discussion on it at our regular meeting on March 12. Is that, that's not the schedule anymore, Mr. Busk. Go ahead, jump in here, please. Yeah.
Commissioner Wiskom, the schedule, that was the anticipated schedule, and we're looking at modifying it a little bit so that the planning commission has more time in advance to review the document before making comments on it, so.
So if, so the March 4 date is still good-
Correct.
But we're going to slide that-
As far as I-
So we have a chance to-
Correct.
Okay.
As far as I know.
Okay, good. Thank you for that correction. I'm really glad to know that. Okay, the plan, during the public comment period, staff will also be taking the plan to applicable stakeholder groups for, for their input. And finally, there's going to be an interactive public workshop during that period, but the date has not yet been determined, at least wasn't determined as of our last Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan Subcommittee Meeting. So after the, after this process, again, March 4 to April 29, the committee will reconvene again in May and discuss what came out of all of these important meetings. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Commissioner Escobedo, updates on your work with committee liaison assignments?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. I'd just like to take a second to thank Commissioner Wiskom for introducing me to both the Parks and Rec Commission and this morning's Downtown Parking Committee. The only update I really have is from this morning's meeting, in which they discussed the bike share program, and overall, there was excitement and support in the room, and I'm excited to see them. They're going to start with 250 electric-assist bikes downtown, and then with plans to expand to other areas of the city. So, really excited to see that.
Any timing on that that can be revealed today?
There was a little bit of discussion about perhaps this summer, but they don't really, really have it nailed down yet.
Okay.
Yeah, they want to get the busy season.
Okay, thank you. So you were up early. I know that's an early committee meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I did that for four years, I recall, recall those early mornings, and then you did it for two.
I told, I told the committee this morning, when I thanked them, I said, Commissioner Escobedo and I fought over who gets to take this.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonderson, any updates for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have been to ABR twice since the last time we were here, and I'd like to start by thanking former Planning Commissioner John Cepanella, if he's watching, I'm sure he is, but to thank him for taking the time out of his now non-planning commission role to introduce me to the ABR and to actually make a very, very nice speech at that time, just getting everybody familiar with one another. There was a change of chair and vice chair at ABR as well, so it was a really nice opportunity for everyone to meet. They also had two new members join at that meeting. So a lot of new faces, a lot of passing the torch. I wanted to just bring your attention to the fact that on January 27th, that was, that was ABR's first meeting of the year, and they had a project come forth that should ring a bell for many people here who have been on the commission for a while. It was addressed as 219 East Haley Street. It is an AUD, A U D priority overlay project, and after returning multiple times, it was finally given project design approval at that meeting. I feel like it's important for the PC and, and council to understand where we are today in both land use policy and design review, since so many things have changed recently with new state mandates and, and changes in the order, I should say, the number of times a project can come before a commission or a board for review. So a lot of those things were discussed at the beginning of the meeting, and I would suggest that if that is of interest, that you all take a moment to review the beginning of that meeting, especially for item one, to see the instructions to ABR members that were provided both by, by staff and chair on the project approval deadlines, which is that new state law. So I thought it was also interesting because there was, under the current approval process, the PC then gives its comments to ABR, which approves the project. But in the future, as proposed, as you know, the project of this scale would actually be approved by PC, and design standards would still be approved by ABR. So this project will next be presenting an in-progress details for HLC review, and when these are satisfied, the applicant will then request final approval from HLC. So if I understood that correctly, there is a number of things going on with this particular project, and just to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Commissioner Lodge, would you like to further update us?
Just a question. HLC will be reviewing the 219 West East Haley project?
It's 219 East Haley. That was what I must have understood. If, if I understood that, obviously you'll have to forgive me.
I'm surprised, since it's not in EPV, it's-
Is it? It, oh, so it will not go back to HLC. There's no HLC component here. Okay, but it does return anyhow to have it one more review from ABR. Thank you for correcting me.
Thank you. And just to add to my comments, the date was February 11th, and there were six people who spoke, of members of the public who spoke at the meeting, five of them very strenuously in support of aggressive action. So the public that spoke there was very much in support of moving forward as strong as they could.
A lot of passion, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Very good, thank you. I have a few updates myself. First, on objective design standards in that working group, January 30th, we had a joint meeting with the American Institute of Architects, Santa Barbara Chapter- meeting with the American Institute of Architects Santa Barbara Chapter Advocacy Committee. Very productive. We're waiting for next steps proposed by our long-range planning staff. Rosie Deisty is the project lead on that, so stay tuned. It is tentatively looking to come to Planning Commission March-April timeframe. It's just a general timeframe right now. The next item I'd like to mention is that I am still involved with the All of Mill Road, Coast Village Road Roundabout Project. As you recall, I was on that working group. We concluded those meetings, and now there have been a couple of joint ABR-Montecito BAR hearings. I've spoken with our city team, Lori Anez, out of Public Works, is the lead, and the application is being revised, updated at some point again in the next several months, let's say. That, too, will be coming to us, but that will be a joint Montecito Planning Commission, city Planning Commission hearing, so much preparation will be required, and I'll be communication with staff about that. There are other, three other main items that are still to be determined relative to when they come to our Commission. I referenced them very briefly in my opening remarks as Chair in January, but the public has continued to ask me, and maybe some of you also, about these. So, there's a great deal of attention and interest, especially with our multi-unit housing ordinance amendments that staff is working on, along with accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendments. Not, not as much pent-up interest in our new zoning ordinance cleanup, but I know that also will be coming to us from staff, and so we'll continue to look to staff as they start to find tune when that comes to us. Now, on accessory dwelling units, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, and I had an email communication with staff this morning, there has now been policy guidance, compliance guidance, that's come from the State Housing and Community Development Department Deputy Director. It's a 23-page document. I'm happy to forward it to anybody who would like to read it. There are six laws that are outlined in great detail in this document relative to compliance, so staff and we will have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of very carefully reviewing a draft, draft amendments to our ADU ordinance to ensure that we are in step with these laws, and so that we're in alignment with the State Housing and Community Development Department, and so that everything goes smoothly there. Again, that coming to the Commission is on a to-be-determined basis. We don't know at this time. Commissioner Higgins, you had a, you have your light on, a question or comment about that?
Madam Chair, I would like you to forward that document, your reference to the Commission.
I'm happy to. I'll send that to Ms. Rydel, and she can forward it to everybody, because if we have one or more additional meetings canceled, this will be your reading then, so that you'll be fully up to speed when staff ultimately brings us the ordinance amendments. And I think those are all of my updates for today. Any closing remarks from staff on any items that we might have overlooked, or from my fellow Commissioners? Okay, so with that, our meeting is adjourned. Please follow the city's website to see when our next hearing is. It's been quite fluid the first couple of months of the year, so we can't tell you definitively when the next date is for our next hearing. Thanks to everyone for today.